She is. All call to me into order.
My plate.
The lady leads us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What we're gonna do is we're gonna switch around a little bit and go right to drug paraphernalia so the chief can get home at a reasonable hour tonight. How's that?
Good, it's George.
Okay, so we're gonna go right to six A. Mel?
Yeah, I don't really have anything on George. Ninety percent of this is George's work. I did just a little bit of cleaning up, shortening it up a little bit. So, you know, other than outlining the appeal process and the other part of how these things are handled, which as is mentioned in section five, it's handled very, very similar to a speeding ticket. You know, you go to what's so-called a traffic court, that's what we call it, but really it's not. It's official title. Its official title is the Judicial Bureau. So that's the process that this would take. As a matter of fact, a lot of our ordinances, you know, the little project that's on either George's plate or my plate, is many municipalities went through their ordinances and took the time to find out, figure out which ones should be criminal and which ones should be civil. And there's a little bit of work that needs to be done at some point to clean the language up. So now we actually have a nice little template hill here relative to penalties and the appeal process and how it works, which would be incorporated into, you know, all of the other ordinances that the city council might select through this so-called civil process.
If you'd like me to, Mel, I'll take that project.
Patty will be proud.
I'm sure she will.
Okay.
Do you need a motion on this?
I would ask for a motion.
I make said motion.
I'll second.
And Chris seconded it? Okay, now we'll open up for discussion or questions. So we'll start with Ziggy and then go to Randy.
If the defendant has the right to appeal the ticket and then it goes in front of the Judicial Bureau, excuse me, finds the defendant guilty, will they then have a record or anything recorded there?
No, this is all in civil court. Now, what they can do from there, Ziggy, if they wish to appeal the Judicial Bureau's findings, they have the right to appeal, in which case it would go to the District Court. Then they would go before District Court, but this is all still a municipal ticket. There's no criminal offense involved here.
Alright.
Randy, this is gonna be a pointed question. I was listening to the radio today and I happened to hear an ad for a glass pipe shop in Burlington. And this, you know, I wanna make sure that I'm for it, but will we be opened up to a lawsuit with this? Because if they're selling glass pipes in Burlington for tobacco products, and that's the way they call it, as tobacco products, isn't, aren't we being opened up?
Well, could be here in Virgens. I mean, the same outfit came back, they're selling it.
This is a citywide ordinance. I mean, this is not enforceable outside of Virgens.
Right, but if somebody has, you know, they're still legal to sell these glass pipes, right?
Well, if you read, remember that first handout that I gave you, and it's actually on a state statute. There is a state statute which covers paraphernalia. And if you read the statute, it says, "Sold for the purpose of," okay? Now, this is where you get into the legal jargon and I don't even profess to understand that or want to get into that, but I will tell you this, that somebody would have to sit here in front of you folks and say that I am selling this glass pipe to smoke regular cigarette tobacco. Now, I don't think there's too many of you in here that would probably look at that guy and say, or whoever, I don't want gender nonspecific, you don't sell glass pipes for the sake of smoking tobacco. You sell it for smoking marijuana, plain and simple. I'm not gonna mix words. And if somebody sat there and told me that they were selling it to smoke tobacco, I'd have a rough time believing any credibility with that person. You sell glass pipes for the purpose of smoking marijuana. You sell other types of paraphernalia for using narcotics. And then it comes up to you folks whether you would, for instance, if somebody wanted to open up a shop, and I think what you're getting at is if somebody wanted to open up a shop here in Virgens, would we then be open ourselves up to a lawsuit? I can't tell you. I can't tell whether you would or not, but I will tell you this, that those pipes are sold for pretty much one purpose.
Okay, well, I mean, it's a reasonable question.
Oh, sure it is, sure it is.
Randy, I, early on in this process, you know, I didn't involve the city attorney relative to the drafting of this ordinance, you know, Fairhaven has this ordinance. But also I got in touch with Garrett Backs, with the League of Cities and Towns. They have a legal branch at the league. And we, there was a few email exchanges about, you know, whether or not we had the authority to do that either under our charter or under the general ordinance law. And he felt comfortable, I guess is the way to, is the best way to say it, okay? So, you know, any ordinance can be challenged, you know. I believe, you know, if the city council adopts this ordinance, Joan's gonna post it in the newspaper, put it in the newspaper, it's gonna be posted, whatever's required by law. There is a citizen's petition right. I mean, somebody could file a petition calling for a special meeting in hopes that this ordinance would be overturned. So there's one remedy out there for somebody feels that...
Or part of it be overturned. This could be split up too, couldn't it?
Well, no, if the citizen, if you, if five percent of the voters file a petition, if you remember back in the Wolf Hybrid days, you know, back when the city was banning Wolf Hybrids and, or attempting to ban Wolf Hybrids, I don't remember exactly what went on, but I think it was something like that, and that ordinance was challenged and there was a public vote, and the voters ruled that we would not ban, have a ban on Wolf Hybrids in the community. And so if that's the will of the people, this ordinance is off the books, alright? So that's an all or nothing situation. So there's one remedy, Randy. The other remedy is for an individual, is let's say that the police, you know, give somebody a ticket and they go to the Judicial Bureau and argue, you know, constitutionality, whether or not a municipality has that authority. They're gonna present that case in front of the Judicial Bureau and the judge is gonna rule, alright? And if the judge rules in favor of the city, they can appeal that to the District Court and it can take its step. Let's say that the reverse occurs. And let's say that the judge rules that this, that they claim that the municipality does not have the authority to this ordinance and so then that ticket gets dismissed, alright? You know, George and I are gonna talk about that and we probably would bring it to your attention to see whether or not, you know, the city council feels strongly enough about this to, you know, use legal fees to try to defend the ordinance. And, you know, to me, it's a little too early to take a position in that regard because I, you know, number one, it's totally hypothetical. Number two, you know, if some judge has some case law defending that the city doesn't have a right to do it, if that's a real strong case law, then probably, you know, we're not gonna push that rock uphill.
There's one thing, if you look at what is on the books right now, it's under Title 18 and it covers subsection four, four, seven, six, and it gives the offenses and penalties. And this is specifically for drug paraphernalia. It reads, "No person shall sell, possess with the intent to sell, or manufacture with the intent to sell, drug paraphernalia, knowing or under circumstances where one would reasonably know that it be used to plant, propagate, and on and on and on and on," just like it is in the ordinance. Now, one of the things that we have to do with police officers is meet the burden of proof. Just like a traffic ticket, we have to prove that person was speeding, that he was in a speed zone, and so on and so forth. It's the same thing with possessing drug paraphernalia. Now, here's some of the hurdles that we have to get across in order to prove our point. In determining whether an object is drug paraphernalia, a court or other authority may consider, in addition to other logically relevant factors, the following. Statements by an owner or possessor of the object concerning its use. Okay, so if somebody says, "Yeah, I'm just gonna use it to smoke marijuana," done deal. Proximity of the object to regulated drugs. So if somebody has something sitting on the console and there's marijuana next to it, or marijuana shake or whatever, again, then you've got your, wanna call it probable cause, or you've met the burden of proof. The existence of any residue of regulated drugs on the object. This is pretty much, if you wanna look at this ordinance, this is really the meat of the matter. Get a pipe, stop a car, person has a pipe in the car, residue is in the bowl. It's clearly marijuana residue and it's burnt. It's not like it's a packed bowl, it's not like it's a baggie full of marijuana. It's proof, though, the person has used that pipe at some point in time to smoke marijuana. Now, I don't feel comfortable and I don't think it's right for me to say, "Well, I'm gonna take your pipe and you can go on your merry way." The person still broke the law. They were still using a regulated substance, an illegal substance. So in this case, we give them the ticket and we confiscate the pipe and destroy it. So, another thing you can look at is the direct or circumstantial evidence of the intent of an owner or anyone in control of the object to sell to persons intending to use the object in violation of this chapter. Instructions oral or written provided with the object concerning its use, descriptive materials occupying the object which explain or depict its use. And these things now enter, these last two kind of enter into somebody selling these things at a retail store. National or local advertising concerning its use, the manner in which the object is displayed for sale, whether the owner or anyone in control of the object is a legitimate supplier of like-related items to the community, such as a licensed distributor or dealer of tobacco products, direct or circumstantial evidence of the ratio of sales of the object to the total sales of the business enterprise, the existence and scope of legitimate use of the object in the community, and expert testimony concerning its use. So these are all the things that we would concern ourselves with and consider before we issue that ticket. So that's really what you're looking at. Now, like I say, there's a couple of things in there that would deal specifically with retail sales of this type of material. And that is, direct or circumstantial evidence of the intent of an owner or anyone in control of the object to sell to persons intending to use the object in violation of this chapter. Instructions oral or written provided with the object concerning its use, descriptive materials accompanying the object which explain the use or depict its use, national or local advertising concerning its use, and the manner in which the object is displayed for sale. And then, of course, the last two as far as whether the guy's a licensed distributor or dealer of tobacco products. So the first part of that, the first part of those explanations or those burdens are pretty much possessors of a piece of paraphernalia. And the last part of that pretty much concerns a retail salesperson, somebody that has a store. So that's basically what we have to do. And again, it's just like establishing the burden of proof, meeting the burden of proof if you're issuing a speeding ticket.
Do we know how many different towns, cities already have these ordinance? I know we know about Fairhaven.
No, Fairhaven does.
Fairhaven's the only one that we know of at this time?
I don't know of any others that do.
So...
So a regular smoking pipe now, when I say regular smoking, like my dad used to smoke, you know, with his tobacco.
Has he smoked the Borkham Riff or whatever?
Well, whatever it was, and so that...
John Black.
John Black.
So that would be considered as one of these now, with that?
No.
No.
Okay, so you can tell, it depends how the pipe is made also then, I guess?
Well, yeah, I mean, normally, normally, when you see a pipe like this, it has a bowl, probably about that big, around about the size of a dime. It has a metal screen or a brass screen in it.
Oh, okay.
And then maybe a chamber in there for water or whatever the case may be.
I don't know, I've never looked at one really close, so...
And then, of course, you know, people get ingenious and I've seen them made out of toilet paper rolls and soda cans, and if they can make it, they'll have it. But nevertheless, case in point, a couple of, was it last weekend? We had, Mr. Keel went up to a local dance, a school dance, and he found some paraphernalia. But of course, we don't have the ordinance in place, so we just confiscated the items. There was nothing there that met the threshold of issuing a citation. And really, I think that, I mean, could we do that? Sure, but I didn't. We didn't do that. But again, that's the instance he would have used it in. We find the pipe in the car, here's the ticket. And everybody admitted, Keel hit on one car and there was an order. Well, you're not gonna write anybody for the order in their vehicle. But another car, we did find a pipe and in that case, it would have been issued with a ticket.
Any other discussion or questions of either George or Mel or Keel? He's enjoying himself.
Yeah, he's had a tough day today.
If not, I'd ask, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Congratulations, chief.
Thank you, thank you very much. This will work out well for us. You too.
Now, does this have, this doesn't have to go through the borders or anything?
Only if it was petition to repeal, alright?
And Joan will have to, like Mel said, get it posted, advertise it publicly.
Yeah, and it doesn't go into effect for, I think it's forty, sixty days?
Sixty days.
If anybody has any other questions or any to think about something afterwards, feel free to give.
We're stopped by the station and maybe they can show you some of the paraphernalia they pick up.
Well, if it doesn't look like my dad's pipe...
Educate yourself, see.
Get some clothes on. Just don't handle it.
Keel would really like you then.
Smell it too close, huh?
Yeah. Okay, before we go any further, there was some emails floating around about a comment that I made at the last meeting, and I just wanna add some clarification about that. I made the statement and I probably should've said it in a different manner in clarification about getting the article rammed down our throat. It's not the fact, it's about the article or that document that we're having to vote on. I do feel that there's beneficial, benefits to unionize. But it's the manner in which we're having to present it. The state of Vermont is at fault for the way they handle processes. They do it all the time, they won't analyze it in a fashion and see what all the side effects are. So they don't know what some of the problems, they don't debug some of the rules and regulations that they set forth. That's where I feel they are at fault for the process. That's what I was trying to point out, so.
Well, now that you've brought that subject up?
Yes, I may, yeah.
Okay. I've been thinking about this. I mean, every meeting that they've scheduled has been a city council night, except the one in Addison, and that got canceled. And now they're having one in Addison tonight. So none of us has been able to go into those informational meetings. Is there any way we can invite them to come here for...
Because it is really a different organization, another group. I've been trying to keep it off the table because once you open it up for one side of it, you gotta open it up for the other. And I just don't want the city council or for either side to use our media to get what their points are, because there's a point, a counterpoint. We could go on for weeks with this. And I know, 'cause I've attended some of these meetings last year to listen to some of this, some of the discussion that was going on, and some people dominated the meeting. And you weren't, it wasn't about, it wasn't about facts. It was about one or two people's personal opinion.
I understand that, but the point is, they came in front of us, with us with no knowledge of anything that's been going on or any changes. And like I said, the only time that I got a chance to go is that night of the storm. I got up the hill and as I'm turning to go on twenty-two A, here comes a tractor trailer truck with his lights flashing, fully chained, turned around and I came back. Now I understand they have scheduled a meeting tonight over in Addison, okay? An informational meeting. But it just seems that if we had to present this to the voters, I'd like to find out more of what's going on, what has changed, not so much debate with them, 'cause that's over with, because I'd just like to know myself.
And it's not our responsibility, in the sense, to present it to the voters. We just have to make it available to them.
That's right.
Because, again, we're not...
Would it be nice just to ask them simple questions, just to know if we didn't have that big of a meeting, just to have them come in front of us?
I would suggest strongly that you try to get ahold of some of the key players and do it that way, because unless the council really is emphatic about having them, I wanna keep it off the table. You know, Mel and I've gone to some lengthy discussion about this. And it's just, it's not in the city's best interest to get involved in their piece of business.
I think they brought it to us and they brought it and they put it in our business and our hands.
The only thing they brought to us is to have it available to the voters.
That's right.
They didn't bring the decision to us.
No, they didn't, but after that we voted for it, she thanked us for being so, considering what's going on. I don't understand that, being professionals. And I didn't understand that, because if you were a professional, why didn't they schedule meetings that was available for everybody? I don't know if this was done intentionally, so we couldn't be at the meetings. It's at the same time, same day.
I think they standardly meet on Tuesday nights, whether it's...
It used to be Thursday, it was Thursday last year. I think it was Thursday, yeah. Because I went to some, we went to some of the meetings.
I know, it has been Tuesday night, 'cause I recall with the swimming pool, those meetings were Tuesday nights prior to the city council meeting.
But last year when they had these meetings, so I was just wondering, you know, I...
I don't remember a Thursday night, but I didn't go to all of them. I know I went down. I think they had one on Monday night.
It wasn't on Tuesdays, I know that, 'cause I went to two of them.
Mel and I will have some further discussion, but I don't think, well, we'll discuss it.
Yeah, I can just tell you that it is awkward to some degree for Joan and I. And yes, you know, there's been a lot of informational meetings, but there always is a bit of an identity crisis and it's an identity problem, I should say, because we're the ones that send the bills and people come to City Hall to pay the bills. And so when there's some pending vote, you know, right or wrong, you know, people come to us and say, you know, "Mel, what's going on?" or "Joan, what's going on with that?" And, I mean, we do have some information. You know, I communicate with Cheryl Brinkman on occasion. I communicate with Tom O'Brien and Kathy Cannon and...
That's part of your job.
Yeah, I just wanna know, you know, what are the projected numbers? I wanna be able to share that information without getting into the fray of whether or not this is, you know, good or bad. I, you know, just wanna, you know, do I wanna know? I'd like to know what the numbers are on a short-term basis and what they are at a long-term basis. Because I can tell you that the numbers that they've been showing, you know, because of the incentives of Act 153, there is some, you know, kind of very short-term benefit and that benefit kind of slides away. But of course, you know, once you have full unification, we really don't know whether or not it's a benefit or not, because, you know, you, you know, there hasn't been that complete analysis. So, you know, it makes it real tough. And of course, when we hear people, you know, you have people that will be voting based totally on the tax rate. And then there's others that base their information on non-tax rate issues, like it would be good to make sure that the three elementary schools have an even education as they feed the high school. And so, you know, that's what makes this real complicated. And, you know, I did not make any of the meetings this time around because I'm here. But, you know, a year ago, Zig, you were there, Mike, you were there at a meeting. And, you know, I really wish that they were filmed, would be good, you know? I'm not picking on you, Barb, on V-Cam, but, you know, they're really, you know, look at our meetings. We don't have people here at our meetings and they watch us on TV. And at the, you know, at the unionization meetings, you know, there really wasn't a lot of people there, you know?
That's right.
And it's unfortunate. I think all, you know, that really we can say is, people need to get educated. You know, they're gonna have a ballot in front of them on March 1. They need to get educated and, you know...
And the sad part about it, lack of education, they'll automatically vote one particular way and that is not always, you should have the knowledge to make a good, sound decision.
Well, that's why I thought maybe if they came and people could see.
I don't, are they having any more informational meetings? That anybody knows? It's sad, because we would've sent Barb to that meeting tonight if we would've known that. Simulcast, right?
Alright, well, I just thought I'd ask, so it could be, you know, we could hear more of it, but...
I think we need to, again, to keep it off our table as a city. I think we have to take that burden on ourselves. Any information I get, pro or con, I share it. And that's the way, that's how I can help do it, inform you people. So again, I don't send it out.
I think, Mike, I sent you...
I don't send it all because I'm all one-sided, I send it because...
Right, yeah, 'cause I sent you the spreadsheet that went, and that went to other members of the city council. I mean, that's not a lot of information, but at least it gives some information.
At least your major comments, you know, how you, you know, the way things are going and with the charts and everything. And like you say, it's a quick fix now, but as we're going down the road, it's gonna get more expensive real quick within your charts there. Alright, thanks.
Okay, moving on, we have no visitors.
I make the motion, we approve the minutes of January twenty-fifth.
Second.
I think we'll gut it out first. Any mission's corrections or errors to those? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. And it's approved. Review budget.
Obviously, this has not been a good winter for us. And I can tell you that the budget that went to you in your agenda packets do not reflect additional salt bills that have come in or obviously additional overtime that we've experienced since that got there. So, you know, this has proven to be an old-fashioned winter here in Vermont.
Made up for last year.
And, you know, obviously, and I mentioned this at the last meeting, I mean, we don't budget for easy winters, but I can tell you, we haven't seen a winter like this in a long time, so we didn't budget for this. So we are in a little bit of trouble, you know? We have to hire outside equipment, you know, outside labor, you know, to get rid of this snow. And obviously, you see the forecast just like I do, we got more snow coming. So this is gonna be a tough one and, you know, I can tell you, you know, we did a lot of paving in the beginning of the year, but I didn't, you know, I didn't spend all of the paving budget. Not that I was predicting the winter, but I can tell you that from a public work standpoint, you know, if this winter continues on, you know, that's what's gonna end up having to do, unfortunately, is to, you know, defer a little bit of some additional paving that maybe we would do in June, so...
I'm noticing that the roads are shifting, a little frost heaves in here, over by Furland Adams.
Yeah, yeah, I came that way, yeah. So anyway, you know, obviously, we're not quite at the two-thirds mark, so that's the percentage you wanna kind of keep in your head at this point. You know, fire continues to be in good shape, revenues on the, in the general fund are in good shape. Sewer, I just wanna let you know that, I think I mentioned this before, that because of the way the auditors handled the accrual from the previous year, you know, we didn't recognize that and so therefore we thought that there was gonna be $600,000 coming in. And when in reality, it's probably $11,000 to $13,000 less than that. We actually made up some of that ground in part because of the way that we build Northlands. But a couple, one other thing is, we have, for the last thirty years, been billing Goodrich Corporation what's called industrial cost recovery. And that actually ran out last year. And so that is, it's not a huge amount of money, but it's $3,729 they've been paying for thirty years. And that, you know, ceased, that collection ceased, so, you know, that adds to the problem a little bit. So I think probably it'll be a little bit of a challenge here, getting to the $600,000 mark. But, you know, I'm not, you know, I don't wanna say the sky is falling or anything, but it's just, it is gonna be short of what we had originally predicted. And, you know, one of the things in the sewer is that if we get kind of, there is a cushion. You know, I think that we ended the year with $70,000, so it's, we're still in pretty good shape in that regard. But it may be the case that some of the money that we're setting aside in sewer replacement... uh, in that regard, but, uh, it may be the case that some of the money that we're setting aside in sewer replacement, capital improvements, we just may not be able to fully set that aside, and, and, because we're really fooling ourselves, if we, if the revenue's not there to just put money and set aside, set aside that you don't have really doesn't make any sense, so when we get into May and June, take a little closer look at it, maybe some of those things would have to be deferred. Uh, the other thing is, that I just wanna mention, that's, I'm gonna say budget related, Mike, is, uh, we actually have, in essence, sold all three trucks that were replaced, uh, not, not the new ones, obviously, but what, the, the trucks that were being replaced. The, the mini pumper is down at the sewer plant that's used in emergency situations to, uh, pump from Lagoon Number Two into the chlorine contact chamber to meet our permit. There needs to be a, we have valued that truck, you know, by using the internet, at three thousand dollars, you need to make that shift. Uh, the heavy rescue vehicle, we sold to Bridport for sixty-five hundred dollars, and then just recently, we, uh, I think we only have one used car, so I don't think I'm breaking Vermont's used car, uh, uh, program that's down towards you, uh, Randy, where we sold the, the nineteen eighty-five Dodge for thirty-five hundred dollars recently, put that truck, in essence, out to bid, uh, uh, in kind of a silent auction, if you will, uh, uh, but a sealed bid purchase, so we sold that, so all of those trucks have now, uh, officially, you know, uh, gone away from the fire department, and any of the proceeds, we've been just putting back into the fire truck replacement fund. Uh, the new truck, we should at some point, Mike, take a look at the new one that, that arrived here. There is some equipment, there is some, some additional purchases that we will use, some of the proceeds from, uh, the sale of the old vehicles to fit up that, uh, fit up that truck. So that's all I had, Mike, on the budget.
Yeah, I was, they were talking about to us tonight, and I was actually able to get some information for them, so that, because they can buy some of that equipment off of state contract and get it at a discount, so, uh, supplied that to Kevin today, so, Chris.
Well, on the, um, Shelburne Dispatching.
Sure.
Is that, was that for a year? I mean, or, or did you pay one lump sum after July first, and that was it for the year?
It is a year, and, and they're actually, there's an email, you may have, the last, in the last set of warrants, there, there continues to be, I'm gonna, I wanna say disagreement, but it's really with a very small D, all right, and we, we don't fight with Jim Warden and, and the Shelburne Dispatch, but the way that they assess, if you will, for that, uh, particularly relative to our fire department providing lift assist, all right, so like the, you know, the, you know, the rescue squad has, has a contract, if you will, an agreement with Shelburne for rescue, we have a contract with, with Shelburne as well. And when the rescue squad is, is called, you know, they're, they're called for whatever, and they need some help, i.e. a lift assist, and there needs to be a, a tone out for the Virgin's, uh, uh, fire department, so that we can go provide that assist, no different than a mutual aid, you know, something like that, that, the way that their system is set up, uh, they end up tabulating, you know, that as being two calls, and Jim Warden and I just, we send emails back and forth about, about that, so, uh, there is a, like I say, with a small D, a disagreement about how that is, uh, apportioned, so, uh, 'cause I think that we, we budget about nineteen hundred or two thousand dollars, and we paid them something about that. Uh, when the bill come down, comes down, it's like thirty-eight, thirty-nine hundred dollars, and Jim Brewer and I go through the bill to split out, you know, though, to, to me, and I, and I, I do not wanna sound mean to Shelburne, but our feeling is that's like a double billing, because it's really just one incident, uh, you know, it really, you know, to me, if we're all members and it's a mutual aid, it shouldn't be billed twice, that's our, that's our feeling, all right, so, um, but Jim, Jim's a busy guy, so lots of times when I send him an email, I don't, I don't get something, um, back right, you know, very, very quick, quickly with him.
Okay.
So that's a year, it is a year.
And the other question I had is on the vehicle maintenance in the police department.
Yeah.
What was that big jump? I missed that in January, the first of January.
Well, I can tell you that we have lots of ele- electrical problems with our vehicles, and I think it's, you know, the, the new vehicle that we have, we bought from a company that fits up vehicles, so a lot of it deals with, uh, with electrical problems, uh, but I, I can't remember, you know, anything specific that comes to mind, but we've, you know, there's a lot of, you know, we have four or five vehicles, uh, so, uh, but I could, I could get more information for you, Christine, to.
One, one of them is the, the white Chevy, that's been given, and they've had to leave it running, otherwise it, for some reason, the battery dies, kills, they go out to start it, and it won't start. Yeah, mhm, and, uh, a, a citizen had contacted me, and I got in touch with Mel and the chief. The chief was very quick to respond, and we responded to that individual, that we're having some issues with some of our vehicles, and the fact that they need, they need to be able to respond in a timely manner, uh, so they need to be, the windows need to be cleared and whatnot, so, but chief is gonna tighten down on that a little bit to try to cut back on that.
Only, only when necessary.
Yeah.
Any of this covered on the warranties? Are they on the new vehicles, or?
Those are the older.
That's where our money is, or being spent?
Yeah, yep, one, one car is going away this July.
The white one, yeah.
Yeah, so we gotta, you know, manage through another few months to.
Is that the big white one or the smaller one?
Well, there's, we have the black one, and then we have two, two that are white and black, one of them is the K-nine unit. It's the one that's all white, that's the one that's gonna, uh.
Is that the Chevy or the Ford?
Chevy.
The white, the, yeah, the white, all white.
The all-white Chevy?
Yeah.
So, okay, Mel, I don't know if you're gonna cover this, but, uh, just on the warrants, uh, tannapatin ice begun? That's something different that we're, we're doing?
Yeah, that's the, uh, molasses, uh, that goes on our salt to, uh, uh, that makes the salt stick to the road.
Brine type?
Well, it's not what you, it's not like, you know, I know like the state and some other places are using salt brine, this is really, uh, a salt enhancement is what it is, it's, and it isn't just molasses, but it, it actually does, there is some molasses in there, it smells like it, and it, and it actually makes, makes the salt stick to the road a little bit, so you can actually use, yeah, so you use a little bit less, so, uh.
As long as they don't draw the animals to the road.
Well, yeah, it might, but it's, you know, it's molasses, you know, it's not gonna hurt anything.
No, I mean, I mean, they're getting some more business here.
Can I have one more question, if I may, please?
Yeah.
Why are we still paying for the pool phone? Why wouldn't that?
Half, we pay half, the, the bill is eighty-four dollars.
Okay.
And we looked into that, and for years and years, they paid the eighty-four dollars, and, um, you know, Michelle, uh, spoke to them, 'cause I wanted to find out, shut it down, or whatever, and the cost was, uh, they agreed to split the bill in half, so we pay forty-two dollars through, yeah, through the winter, yeah. And it's just cheaper than, to try to discontinue and restart it, so that's what we do.
Good. Any other questions, little Mel? If not, uh, ask for a show of hands, uh, and I'll call on you. Community reports, anybody got any reports they wanna offer?
Just that, uh, we had a meeting scheduled for the rec committee next week, and one of the people couldn't make it, so we're trying to reschedule for March.
Yep, very good. Anybody else?
Okay, um, we'll go to six B, uh, or we'll talk about six B and six C. Uh, appointment of an energy committee, uh, again, we're deferring that until after elections are done and things are settled down, and, uh, we can start working at a different angle, the same with, uh, item number C, we'll try to deal with that in March. Uh, item number D is gonna stay on, as Mel noted, uh, a few months.
Yeah, the meeting, uh, the, uh, Cheryl Brinkman is, she's the chair of the Virgin Union Elementary School, and uh, I've been communicating with her, and, uh, you know, because there are wetlands down in that area, uh, you know, they, you know, they just, you know, aren't interested in some, just some blanket easement down there, and so she feels that a, a site visit would be in order, and so we've deferred this into March or April to, to find out, uh, you know, you know, where the best location would be to tie in if we were, if we were to use, uh, use that easement. Uh, I have, uh, been in touch with Alan Quackenbush, uh, who was a state wetland specialist, to find out what is involved, and, and, uh, uh, the rules certainly have changed in the last, you know, ten to twenty years, and, you know, uh, you know, obviously, many of our sewer mains are located in wetlands, because that's the low part of the town, and the way it works now is that if you're even just tying into an, an existing main, you can replace mains that are in a wetland without the, the need for a permit, but you can't have any new connections to that pipe, uh, no, any new disturbances without going through a permit process, so, uh, so we would, you know, have to do that, uh, you know, I still think the best thing for us to do is to go to the schools first. You know, I don't think there's any need to go and, and do a complete wetlands analysis here, we need to go to the schools and, you know, and make sure that they're, uh, comfortable with the granting ameesma, and then we would, you know, would, uh, would proceed with the, uh, with the state, so. So that meeting, like I said, Mike, will be either March or April, by the time, uh, if this, if this snow ever leaves us.
It will. Um, item number E, zoning map amendment, just a reminder that the, there's a public hearing uh, at our next meeting, uh, it'll be at seven o'clock.
Yep.
Here at the fire station, February twenty-second, and then after we get done with the public hearing, we'll go right into the, uh, regular meeting. So, that's on air. We'll go to item number seven, city managers' report.
Yeah, I just wanna bring up a couple things, Mike, uh, one is the, the, uh, we have some fairly good news relative to the River Rock project, and that's the, that's the stairway project from behind the Benton property with a viewing platform to the base of the falls, and, uh, it's my understanding, this, this is a project that was actually, I think, uh, you know, back in Randy's Friday's Day, was when it was originally uh, thought about and received a grant, and of course, it was originally designed with steel and wood and whatever, it was an extremely expensive project, and it was redesigned by Trudell to use, uh, concrete, and, uh, anyway, we, uh, you know, there was eight or ten companies that came to the, uh, to the, uh, pre-bid conference, and, but we only had two bidders, and, uh, the low bid was Aero Design, which is the same company that, that did an earlier phase of the River Rock project at three hundred eighty thousand, uh, three hundred eighty thousand six hundred, uh, the other company that bid was Kingsbury Companies uh, at four hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, so a hundred thousand dollars, uh, separated, uh, the two bids. Uh, I've been in, uh, contact with Scott Gurley with the state, he's the project manager, if you will, this is a V-Trans project. Uh, he and I, uh, again, with a small D, I have a disagreement relative to what the contract says and doesn't say. The contract's actually crystal clear, uh, in my opinion, what happened is, is there's a, there's a paragraph in there underneath the chart that sets forth the federal, the state, and the local share, and in the bottom of it, and I've always read it and known about it, it said that once the, once the bids were in, that the, uh, that the grant would be adjusted by ten percent to cover construction engineering and ten percent to cover contingency, and so therefore, this four hundred and sixty-two thousand dollar project, which included sixty thousand dollars of engineering, and three hundred and, you know, or, you know, whatever thousand dollars of, of construction, that could always be, uh, could be increased in light of that, in light of that paragraph. And so, uh, four sixty-two is, is the outside number, all right, we spent sixty thousand dollars on engineering, three hundred and eighty's the bid, that's four forty, uh, without any, without any contingencies, and really, there doesn't need to be any contingencies, because it's a lump sum bid. Uh, and, but there does need to be contract management, and that contract management could exceed the, the other twenty to twenty-two thousand dollars. And we're working with the, uh, the state in hopes that the structural engineer, engineers, uh, engineers, ventures that designed this can provide that, but the state has a clause that if you have a project of over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you can't use the same engineer that designed it to do the, uh, to do the work. You know, I, uh, I understand a little bit of that, but there actually is an exception to that rule, and I just think that it, in this instance, you know, it, we don't need to have an additional outside engineering firm and an additional structural engineer. And so I'm gonna pursue an exemption in part, because I don't think we need one, but also, you know, this project has been on the books for ten years, or something like this, and I wanna get going, I wanna get this project going in the spring, and, uh, but again, I really don't know if the, if the construction management's only twenty-two thousand dollars, and if I can get that exception to use them, we're, we're fine without arguing about that paragraph, because what, what Scott has said is that that paragraph was not supposed to be in the grant agreement. Well, you know, yeah, yeah, okay, it wasn't supposed to be, well, it is, it's, it's in there, so, uh, but I told him, I said, you know, I don't, you know, the city's not out to fight with it, fight with anybody, we just wanna get the project, uh, get the project done, so, you know, I'm really hoping, Mike, that finally we can see some action down there, and there was a, a deduct of, uh, relative to the lighting, you know, that has that standard ornamental lighting that we have on the Falls Park, and I really don't wanna remove lighting, uh, from this project. I, I just think it's, it's, from an aesthetic standpoint, it's needed, it matches, uh, in with the Pump House Island, but more importantly, for safety and security, you know, I mean, you need some lighting, uh, in the project, so I really, uh, you know, I don't wanna see that removed, um, I obviously communicate with the Benton family, they're the ones that are most affected by the project, and, and I'm pretty sure they want, they want lighting incorporated in there for, for security reasons, so hopefully, uh, uh, we can make, get the numbers to, uh, come in sync here and have a spring project. The other one I wanted to, uh, just bring up to you, and we talked about this briefly over, uh, you know, back, I think during, quite a bit during our budget work session, about how important it is for the city to obtain the land, either lease or purchase the land that we, uh, spread our, our sludge or biosolids up there, and, uh, I was recently contacted by Kevin Henderson from the state, uh, and, um, they actually are looking at, I think, all of their properties, you know, obviously, Mike works for the state of Vermont, so he, uh, I mean, can't comment too, too much about what's going on there, but anyway, they contacted us uh, about this, and so, the, uh, the thirty-five acres that you see here, that's, that's the, the acreage that we actually have our permit on, all right, and to dispose of that. This other forty-five acres, Comfort Hill runs right, right along the edge of this aerial photo, and I just think that, uh, you know, if, if, depending on the cost, you know, to me, I think it'd be good to acquire that forty-five acres as well. There's about ten or fifteen acres of similar soils to this, that might also provide, uh, some space for us to, uh, uh, to, uh, for biosolids management. Uh, the other thing is, is that in the, in the past, when we were spreading, spreading uh, uh, the sludge that was trucked out McDonough Drive, out Sand Road, out the Walker Road, and coming around through the Brands Farm, and I, you know, really, obviously, it's a much shorter distance if you just go up Comfort Hill. So it involved constructing a road through this forty, uh, through this, through this forty-five acres, so again, you know, and I'll, I'll, you know, as soon as I learn more, more about this, but, um, we've got this in the forefront now, and, uh, you know, hopefully, you know, this is an opportunity for us to, to acquire that land and have a home for our, our sludge, 'cause obviously, the, the alternatives, you, you've, uh, I think some of you that are on the table here know how outrageous it is, uh, to, uh, de-water sludge and have it trucked, you know, you know, hundreds of miles away, if it can be managed, uh, in this fashion, it, it saves everybody a lot of money.
Somebody has created a shale pit right behind, uh, Ed Sears' house, so getting a road base in there would not be a, a hard thing to do.
Yeah.
Does this board, excuse me?
Is that enough land to deal with the sludge from the city?
Uh, yeah, there's everything, it, it's not like you dump it there and you're done, you know, it, it's a biological, you know, operation there, and you plant corn, you plant, you know.
Right, I understand, I just didn't know how much land was required to, you know, I know in, in agricultural waste, you need a certain amount of land to spread the.
Have you, how many, how many years have you do this, every?
Well, you know, Lagoon Number One, you know, every, you know, six years, Lagoon Number Two, every ten years, something like that, so.
Would we spread that on the whole thing, or part of it, and just rotate?
Uh, it'd be typically part of it, Zig, you know, there's, there's, what happens is, is the, our sludge gets tested for metals and all this type of thing, and, uh, uh, the, I'm not a chemist, but I, I know something about, something about lagoon sludge, and that, that, depending on, the, the key factor for us historically has been aluminum. You know, we use alum to settle out the solids, and what happens is, is alum, actually, if there's too much alum put to the soil, it makes, uh, it makes phosphorus not available to the plant, so there's a. there's a, there's a, that's the determining factor as to what the spreading rate is, you know, the certain number of gallons per acre. So, you know, I, you know, you know, I think that, you know, probably the thirty-five acres is probably sufficient for us, but, you know, I'd rather have a little more, you know, to give us a little, little bit of buffer.
There's other space out there where Mel and I have looked at it, there's other space that is more, could be developed with a little bit of work, and it would just add, and it would, Mel and I have talked, and of course, we'd have to go through the council, but that would be our intent to continue to lease the land.
To, to the.
Back to the farmer, for the years that we're not using.
That's what I was questioning, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And one of the reasons that we couldn't do it last year was the moisture content in the soil was so high, I mean, you dig down a foot and you were hitting water, so, I mean, and I think that, you gotta be able to dig about three feet.
Does this boundary go up by Ed Sears?
Yes.
Is the road, so the road separates that?
No.
Is on this side of the road?
Well, Comfort Hill runs right along this white strip, and Ed, Ed is, is probably like right here, so, you know, Ed is not at the town line, I mean, this is the, this other line, this is the corner, it's corner.
All right, so that is bordering the, the road up there?
Correct, right, right.
Okay, I just wanna get that clear in my head here.
Yeah.
All right.
So I'll keep you, certainly keep everybody informed, but, you know, to me, it's, this is good news, that, you know, we're communicating with the state in hopes to acquire that piece of land by, you know, preferably purchase is what I would, you know, as opposed to lease, I mean, I think it's be, you know, a good asset for the community to have, you know, long-term.
So, plant some seeds with your representative, if you run into them, saying that, because they can help make this happen, or they may end up having to help make this happen.
Does part of our pilot money come from that?
Yeah.
I can't tell we could negotiate a deal if they haven't been getting money.
Well, now we get some, we get pilot money on the land as well.
Darn it.
Any, anything else, Mel?
Nope, that's all I, that's all I have, Mike.
New correspondence, uh, as I announced in the last meeting, I had gone to the, I was in Ferrisburg Town Meeting, and they informed me about Mr. Deniker, well, come to find out, something didn't end up happening, so they created a letter that is in your packet, and Mel thought it would be very wise to share that with you, so if there was any discussion that the council wanted to have, that could come to the table.
Yeah, one of the things, I, you know, it's, it had to be almost, when we went out and met with Ferrisburg, I, I, I think that there was, we had a committee formed, right?
Yeah.
It was Christine.
I went out.
Ziggy, and not you, Randy, you weren't on the sewer extension committee.
David, I think David was.
Oh, David was on there, and, you know, we, you know, we put forth, in essence, a proposed article to the Ferrisburg Board of Selectmen, and although this letter is written back to Tom Deniker, it just appears by this, even though they wanna keep communications open, it just doesn't appear that they're wanting to move forward with any kind of an article in front of their voters, certainly at this time. I wanna just remind people as to, like, this letter makes reference to Ferrisburg telling Tom to go ahead, Tom, and talk to the city of Virginians, you know, directly, all right, and I just wanna remind everybody as to why we don't deal with private property owners, but deal with, with towns, and it's really, it's really twofold, one of it is, is that obviously, the, by dealing with the town, the, the, the financial arrangement is with the town, not with a, a business, and so that way, it's, you know, to me, much more secure to deal with the town, also relative to, you know, any use restrictions that you have with the town, you know, I think that, you know, the two towns would, hopefully, with, with a good agreement, would, would not, you know, stretch the uses, which might be the case with a proper, with a private business, but most importantly, why we deal with towns is that if we deal with an individual like Tom, and, and grant him a sewer extension for the dealership, it opens the city council up to somebody else asking, and if the, and if the city council denies somebody else, now you're in a, now you're in a difficult situation of trying to defend why saying yes to them and, and no to this one, all right, so it just opens that, opens that door, so it's not about, you know, Tom, I mean, frankly, you know, Tom's dealership, you know, having a, you know, sewer over there to, to a service lot, you know, you know, to me, isn't real damaging, but it's, it's other potential uses that we don't have any idea what they are, that could come back and, and end up, you know, bringing action against the city, and so, it's just, you know, more a guarantee cleaner to, to deal with the town.
You've got another store that may be going in across the road.
I was just gonna ask, have you heard from them at all, or have they made any inquiries?
The Dollar Store?
Yes.
No, no, it's, you know, it's my understanding that they, you know, it's a very low number of employees, and, and therefore, their plan is to have an onsite system for that facility, so no, no one's ever talked to, talked to me about it.
But that's not saying if they, if we, for example, granted Tom this, not saying that they would come before us, because that definitely would increase the value of their property.
And you've got some other houses in close proximity.
That's right.
That may say, hey, you know, I gotta go put fifteen thousand dollars in a new system, is it better spent, the new system lasts maybe ten, fifteen years, so do I hook to a city sewer, and, and I don't have to worry about it? So, yep, some, any other comments, discussion?
If not, we're going to move on to item number B.
I, I think I put a little sentence or two in there in your, in the agenda notes relative to this plan, you know, obviously, the, the shelter project, you know, the community development block grant program, those are federal dollars, and obviously comes with much federal regulation, and in this instance, it does involve the relocation of the current manager at the shelter, and therefore, under the federal regulations, a municipality has to have, you know, a so-called residential anti-displacement and relocation plan, so this is the template that, that's been provided to us, and would, I would recommend that the city councils sign this.
Do we need a motion?
I make the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have Ziggy making a motion, Chris second it, I'll open it up for discussion. Chris?
What is the definition of assistance? When it says under, like, the second, the municipality will provide relocation assistance? Tell me what the assistance means, does that mean we're, we're not, no financial assistance, obviously?
The municipal, well, I mean, there could be, there'll, there'll be grant funds being used to do that, so assistance, let's say that, that they need to go into a, a new apartment, and there's security deposits that need to be paid, I mean, it's very possible that the, that the amount of money that somebody has to pay is more than what they had prior, all right, and so that's the, that's a form of assistance, conceivably, it could, could be, that difference could be converted into either part or all of a down payment on a, on a new home.
But I think where Chris has had a desk, not our money.
It's not taxpayer money, that's.
Not our money.
It's not our money, no.
Okay, my next question is on the fourth, on to the fourth one, that lady, I forget her name, that's being hired to manage this.
Margaret, Meg, Margaret.
She's responsible for all this, number four, right?
Absolutely, yes, yeah.
Okay. All right, that's my question.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye, go ahead.
Opposed? Pass that down, get it all signed.
You have an original, Mike.
I have.
Yeah, looks good.
I do that. Okay, um, and we'll turn to Mel on item number C, license agreement.
Yeah, this, you know, you know, I'm gonna say has some, some similarities to the, the small cities market, if you remember, small cities had a, had some underground tanks located within the city right of way, had a pump located in the city right of way, and when those things occur, and, you know, I think, you know, in the olden days, these things used to be done with a phone call and maybe a handshake, and what happens is, is that we really need to, you know, have, you know, signed license agreements, when these, we're not talking about somebody's driveway, or somebody's sewer line that's hooked up, but these are things that are outside the norm, and so what, what it is, and I'm sure all of you have seen this, is there historically is a cable that runs on the top of the dam and is tied to the horse barn, there's a hole in the backside of that building, and a cable that sticks inside of that building and is fastened to, to, I'm assuming, a, a column in there somewhere, and there's kind of two things, one is that really shouldn't be there, it shouldn't be, you know, tied inside of a building, and so if you look at the drawing here, if you, if you think in the bottom of it, that's where the horse barn is, and you'll notice where it says, new post for horizontal lifeline, that's where they're gonna drill a hole and put a, put a pole embedded into the bottom of the river, so is, so that's where the support is gonna be, and the other thing is, is you can see how the, the top of the dam has a jog, and historically, that line just kind of ran across there, and it didn't follow the top of the dam, so if somebody fell, you know, they're probably hanging out there for a, a little bit, and so what this does is gets that safety line right over the top of the dam itself, and to have that line maintain that angle, they've designed a, a cable, and you will, and a support that ties into the bridge back here, so, what I was, what I was looking for was for authorization from the council, like, similar to the small cities, to authorize me to enter into a license agreement with Green Mountain Power, to allow them to tie, tie that safety cable into our bridge.
We're not liable in any fashion if that system fails, right?
The, our agreements actually require them to, there's a certificate of insurance, it's filed, so that it's all there, it's no, it's like small cities with their underground storage, where they're totally responsible for any, any pollution that would occur, so.
Does that put any stress on the bridge?
I, you know, I really don't think so, Zig, you know, you're really talking about, it, it's all it is, is a cable out there, and, and the most, the, the most amount of weight would be an individual, you know, I mean, so you're not talking, if you, if, you know, there is a little cross-section in here, how it's drilled through the support tied in there, so, you know, I don't think it's, it's, I don't think it's like it's gonna tug on the bridge at all.
All right.
Just so we don't catch anybody doing the wire walk down through there.
You had, you had to bring that up, didn't you?
Yep.
Or some kid challenging each other as they're walking by with their hands on it.
We don't need any swift water rescue out there.
I'll make a motion, Mel, go ahead and sign this agreement.
Second, then.
Motion by Chris, second by Mel, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, Mel, you have the authority.
Thank you. The last one is, is, this is actually on a, on a, one of our social service agreements with Vermont Adult Learning, that the council signed actually back in two thousand and nine, we always sign, sign them in duplicate, and, is that, what's on the other side? Yeah, I want to use that one there.
Use this one?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And we sent, we sent to original, we had the city council signature, sent to originals, and this one just never came back to us, and they can't find it, so I'm sorry that they're, you folks are having to revisit this one.
While people are signing that, I have so, some words for our residents, it was brought to my attention before about certain things that we need to remind citizens about, is the sidewalk, there's an ordinance that is their responsibility to maintain, we do plow, and we try to maintain it well, it is winter, it is Vermont, we're very sorry that someone gets hurt on our, on the sidewalk, but the ultimate responsibility for keeping those sidewalks clean is the person that owns the property by that sidewalk. The other thing is, I've got a request from, and I haven't told Mel yet, from the Public Works Department to get hazardous duty pay, they're getting everything from snowballs and shovels being thrown at them, we are having a bad winter, bear with us, it's not their fault, as I put in an article, and I don't know if it's been taken out, is, it's, they don't put the snow on the road, but it is their job to put it out of there, so, you know, and, yes, they started a little, little bit late on Sunday, and people had got out and taken care of some of their driveways, but, you know, they did deserve to sleep in a little bit late, sometimes they work in late or all night, so, show them, show them a little mercy. The other thing that Chris asked, mentioned, have mentioned, was if you have a hydrant by your house, would you please try to shovel it, you don't have to take the snow down all the way to the ground, six inches above the ground is, is deep enough, but at least, in about, at least three feet on each side of the hydrant where the supplies come out, they gotta be able to get in, maneuver around, hook to those, and they're next to impossible to find, some don't all have the, the flag on them, so, the next thing is, the next meeting is February twenty-second, mentioned that, and we have our public hearing with a meeting to follow. I believe that's all, I'd ask for Mr. Mel.
The motion to adjourn.
And a second?
Second.
Ready me a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.